Okay. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We will get started. If we could all have the pledge of allegiance to start.
Pledge of allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First item is the minutes from the September 25 meeting. Does anybody on the board have any comments, corrections on those minutes? The verbatim minutes. I want to say that I'm a little disturbed by these verbatim minutes, not because every time, you know, you pause and do what I just did now, which sounds normal when you're talking, but when you see it in print, it's like a lot, a whole lot of hyphens, and it makes me sound really illiterate. But that's not the issue. The issue is that when people speak, it identifies them as UM and UF, which it took me a minute to figure out. That means unidentified male and unidentified female. So in the last meeting, the, I was identified by name. Somehow this computer that records the minutes knows me. They also seem to know Jim. Everybody else was UM and UF, unidentified male, unidentified female. So in terms of looking back at the minutes, I think you're supposed to know who's speaking and who says what. So I think that's an issue with those verbatim minutes. That said, a motion to approve the verbatim minutes as recorded.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our first item under old business is calendar PB3-2025, which is, it says here continuation of public hearing for a site plan application for 3229 Albany Post Road. It's actually not a continuation of the public hearing because we closed the public hearing at the last meeting. So we are here now, having had a chance to review the resolution for this property, to vote on the, on that resolution. And I will just start with a couple of questions I had on this. And just a couple of things in the wording. On page two, the first, at the top, the first whereas the applicant sought and received zoning board of appeals approval on 21225 for a side yard variance, variance from height of fence, and variance from lot coverage. Was there not also a variance for the rear property line of? We're good? Was there not also a variance? I want to see how the verbatim minutes puts that down. Unidentified male or female. The rear variance where they put up that metal building, was that, is that one of the, is that?
That's, that was actually side yard variance.
That's side yard?
Yes.
Okay. The property, the part of the property facing the Con Ed, I mean, the Conrail lot is not rear?
It's not rear because I guess the property kind of goes like this, and the lot line behind the metal building is considered the rear.
Okay. All right. So then, so the side yard variance is referring to that? Okay. Let's see. Page three under comments at the top.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just before you get to that, at the very bottom of the page, there's a reference to the public hearing being closed. It was opened on eight, 2825.
On the very bottom of the?
On page two.
Yeah.
So just confirm the date that the public hearing was closed?
That was our last meeting. So that was nine twenty, the minutes, nine twenty-five.
Thank you.
Oh, right. The, on page three, the, at the top, where the list of agencies or people that we got, that we requested, received, and got comments from, did we also, should we also include the fire department? Was that, was the fire department contact, you know, one of the?
Yes.
So that should be?
We can add, we can add that.
Add that in. And then just to let, just to be clear, because there were a couple of conditions we left off with last time, that, and one was that this is pending, getting the wetlands permit from the DEC. Is that incorporated here in any way, or is that just being dealt with through the building department? What is the, right? That was one of the conditions that was not?
Well, we had, we had amended the application to include a wetland permit.
Right. And then?
Did we need DEC approval? No, I don't think we do.
So we're not waiting on anything?
They would just be local.
For that?
They'd just be local.
Okay. So the local meaning through our building department?
Yes.
Okay. And the other item was completion of a oil-water separator? Is there, is that complete, or is the drawing of it, is that also in the hands of the building department?
I have to make some minor technical comment that George had commented on. So I have to, in order for you to sign the site plan, I have to make those change, some of those minor changes.
Okay. So this resolution could go ahead. We just need to complete that before I sign off on the drawing. Okay.
Yep.
I think that is it. And we, oh, and we were waiting for, we had an email documenting that the two properties were merged, an email from the town? Is that?
Yes.
So we're, so there's nothing then that's, that I see that would keep us from proceeding voting on this? Is that, do you guys all agree? We're good to go here? We're good to go then?
Yes.
I just, I just have a few minor clarifications, I guess, more than anything, for my client. So, sorry, Jim Annacarico with Cronin Engineering. Page five, number five, just, there was no length of time for the post of a maintenance security, when they would get that returned to them, assuming everything was, you know, up to par in that timeframe. I think it might be, it may say it later on, but if you look at 16 on page six, it says provision of a landscape maintenance bond remained in effect for two years. So I don't know if that's the same duration for that as well.
You could certainly have it as a similar timeframe, unless, Peter, you have some suggestion based on prior practice.
Well, those two seem to be pretty much referring to the same thing. So is the timeframe in number 16? I mean, is there a conflict?
Number 16 is the, is the landscape maintenance bond, and then number five is a maintenance security, which goes beyond just landscape. It's landscaping, screening, safety advice. That's typically during construction of the, you know, the construction of the plan and the process itself. So they should be within, you should have construction finished well within two years.
Right.
Right. So.
And that'd be part of CO.
Yes.
So would that, would that be, I guess, then that, would that, would it be right to say that that would be returned upon issuance of a CO?
That makes, that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. And the landscaping bond would stay for two years beyond that? Okay. That's fine.
So the wording's okay?
We could clarify in number five that the, the bond would be returned upon the issuance of a CO.
Mr. Chairman, where are we at with the checklist that Mr. Cook had for the door and all that other stuff that was supposed to be finished?
I think that, I'll let him answer that, but I think that last time we talked about the fire door, that it was completed?
The door was almost completed. We're waiting on a panel for the door.
Oh, okay.
That's on backorder. That was on backorder. But everything else on the list has been addressed at this time.
Anyone, are you, do you have other?
No, Mr. Chairman. Maybe just one more. So on page four, number four, so that's required post of performance bond. Just want to understand exactly what's going to be included, or what needs to be included for that bond. You know, we don't have any, we don't have any improvements within the village or DOT right of way. So, you know, typically, at least in my experience, typically it's for those types of improvements. In case something doesn't get completed properly, you know, there's a bond in place to be called to complete it. So are we, I mean, I wouldn't think the building construction that we're proposing needs to be included in that bond. So I'm not, I just want to clarify what that.
I'm going to refer to the, to the, I guess, to the engineer, since you've mentioned in this. Is that, is that something that we, that you can clarify? I'm not too?
So usually that's if you can't finish something. So, but we can, I think that's more to discuss offline as part of your improvements, the costs, you'll submit the costs, and we'll figure out what improvements, if you don't do them, we would want to do. So.
You're obviously not going to finish the building for us.
No, we wouldn't finish the building. But if you get, so to that, to that end, if you started the building, we wouldn't want to see it sit there.
Sure.
So it'd be something to take that down.
Right. I mean, I get it, like, for an AMS job, something like that, you know, that's really important because you, it's, it happened in my, in my town, up in Fishkill. There was a, you know, self-storage project that was started. The guy went bankrupt. It's been sitting, you know, in, with a foundation, basically, and nothing further than that. And it's been a bone of contention in town for years. But in this case, you know, they do obviously operate a business here. They're looking to, you know, do these things to, to improve their business. So, you know, although anything can happen, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's a good bet that they're going to finish everything that they have to finish. So, like you said, we could talk about that offline, I guess. I have no problem with that as long as.
Okay. So as far as?
It is to, it's to prevent blight, you know?
Yeah, right.
Something like that happen.
So that's an administrative thing that will, that'll be held after? It doesn't affect voting on the site plan approval?
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
That's it.
Anyone else on the board? Comments, questions? Okay. So what the, what we have in front of us, the draft, would have a date changed on page two as to when we close the public, the public hearing. On page three, the fire department will be included in the list of agencies contacted for comments. A little clarification in the wording on page five, number five, regarding the maintenance security bond or fee. And otherwise, that's it. Okay. Then if there's no other questions, I'd like a motion from somebody on the board to approve the resolution for the site plan approval for 3229 Albany Post Road, Pacific Automotive. You don't have to repeat everything I said. You could say so moved.
So moved. So moved.
So moved. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. It is carried.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is new business, and it is a site plan application for 3106 Albany Post Road, calendar number PB4-2025, for the gallon measure property. And just a little background, I think, if you guys would just give me a minute, I'm going to just want to give a little background. We did previously have a site plan application that went through, but it largely involved the original building, which was a grandfathered building with non-conforming setbacks. But when it had, when it was demolished, that made it lose its grandfathered status. So the applicant has put together a new site plan, which is more conforming to our zoning, actually, and it's always a good sub, it's always sort of a sub-goal of zoning and planning to bring things into conformity. So in that way, we might have a positive aspect to this. And I know the applicant is, is going to be interested in moving things along as quickly as possible because it's been a long process, and this is the second time around. So I certainly feel we can do what we can, but we can only do that while taking care to, I will, I'll take public comments afterwards. I see a hand back there, but if you get, if you, I will, there will definitely be a period where you can comment if you're in the public, but I would like to start first with, with my comments, the boards, and the applicants. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit here and point out that there seem to be two main questions here that we have to, that we have to look at. And one of them is regarding the parking. The new site plan is showing the parking on the 9A side of the property, whereas before it was behind it, facing the residential section. And while our, our overlay zone, which is sort of a little sub-chapter to the, to like a master plan, says in general to try and avoid parking up front, the AMS project, which is the big housing development behind the hardware store, has a parking garage, but they also have some parking up front, but, but there was care taken to make sure there was sufficient landscape, so it's not in your face, so to speak. So we would have to, so this board has to weigh, having that parking on 9A, if that's a problem, or perhaps it would be more of a problem and a disturbance to the neighborhood to have it on the other side where it was. So, you know, I think there's pros and cons, and we have to look at that and ask questions about that and look at the site plan. And the other issue that seems a little contentious coming up right now is the, I always thought it was a tea kettle, but I'm hearing it referred to as an oil can. And the new site plan eliminates that. It is not a legally historic landmark. It's not, doesn't have landmark status. However, it is a sensitive, perhaps a sensitive or emotional issue for, for some people because it's kind of iconic. And, and what, what is done with that, if it's eliminated, or if they're going to have to find some way to preserve it, is also part of this site plan process here. So those, those are the two issues that I foresee being, are going to have the most discussion right now. I have some specific stuff on the site plan, but before I get to those, I will let you present it, Jim?
Sure.
And, and let's make sure everybody cites their name, anybody who speaks, because otherwise you're going to be an unidentified male and an unidentified, or an unidentified female on the computerized minutes that, that we're using right now. So, Jim, state your name and, go ahead.
Jim Annacarico with Cronin Engineering. The engineer for the applicants, Bernie and Brian Calibro. With me is Marco Mandra, the architect for the project. We were both obviously involved in the first go-around, if you will. So maybe I'll just start there real quick. As you said, it's not our intention to be back here with a different plan, but circumstances have us here now. That, you know, when, when the roof of the building was removed, it was found that the walls just were not structurally sound enough to, to even build on. So they came down, and as you mentioned, you know, we lost our pre-existing non-conforming status, mainly because the building was always over the property line. We had gotten a variance for that, to build straight up from that corner and not go any further out into the street, obviously. And we lost that, obviously. And it was determined, because of the way the village code is written, that we couldn't even build right in that same exact footprint if we wanted to. It just, the code did not allow for that to happen. That was our preference, by the way, but so be it. We are here now. We, that building, as you mentioned, provided parking to the west, right up against the residential neighbor on Rock Ledge. It also had parking all along the northern property line with the residential neighbors to the north of us. It did have an out in the front of the building, onto Rock Ledge. It had a, had a driveway, which was going to be egress only, which was based on the New York State DOT's comments, because it was so close to the intersection. They didn't want cars going in and out of there, just out. Our new site plan has the building located to the west, all the way to the west, within the zoning setbacks. So, sure, we could do that.
If I remember how to do this.
Is that that one?
Is this up on the screen there? So people in the?
That way, everybody can see the same thing.
On both sides over here?
Yes, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay. Yeah. Can we go to the other one, Marcus? First? Yeah, first, yeah. We'll, we'll come back to this one, sorry.
Site plan? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. There you go.
That's a big one.
Yeah. Thank you.
You can zoom out and zoom in, whatever you want to do.
Yeah. Maybe it's there. Okay. So, yep. There you go. So the building is located to the west, as I mentioned. I'm going to go to the next page, which?
Down the balance line, sorry. See the numbers on the, look, to the right. See the numbers?
There you go. So.
Now, can you zoom on that?
Yeah, you can zoom.
I can zoom in, I can, I'm going to, I'm going to outline the.
Zoom in first before you outline, and then it's not going to match.
Oh, look at that.
There you go.
All right. So this is the zoning setback line. And so the building is totally within the zoning setbacks. Doesn't require a variance for setbacks at all.
Could I just interrupt one second? Just so people know, when you have a corner property, you usually have to determine which is the architectural front, and based on the setback shown here, 9A would be considered the front, so that on Rock Ledge is considered a side. So it's 10, a 10-foot setback required on Rock Ledge, a 30-foot setback, I believe, is it 30?
It is 30.
On, on, on the 9A side?
Well.
And on the backyard?
Rear yard, front yard, and side yard.
Side yards are 10.
Right here, 10.
From the village, from the property line. Yeah. Okay.
So, as I mentioned, we, so we do meet all the setbacks. We have parking in front. We also are compliant with our coverage, which is 75% in this zone. We have the area behind the building to the west and to the north as grass. As was approved for the first site plan, we've left those plantings pretty much the same as they were approved originally back here. I think we did change some of the trees, so they weren't 70 feet high. We did do that. We have, we have landscaping in this area right here, along Rock Ledge, landscaping here, we have some shrubs here, some other shrub.
Do you need a different color for the outline?
For which outline?
It's yellow.
I can't see the outline.
The yellow is hard to see?
A little bit, yeah. Sorry. Can you do like a different color?
Okay.
Black, whatever.
Red? How's it red?
Or brighter yellow, maybe? That's.
I don't think I have that option.
Go to a pen, you pick the highlighter, pick a pen, the dark, the magic mark.
This one?
No, to your right.
This?
No, no, keep on that one. That, nice and thick. Now, you can pick any color you want, but go the other one.
Red.
How's that?
All right, yeah.
All right.
Is it better now?
Yeah, thank you.
It's okay. If you spoke up and said that, other people probably felt the same.
So we have plantings in those areas. Plantings in, all along the front.
Plantings as in shrubbery?
And again, these, these were, a lot of these were the same for the, the previous site plan. So.
Alongside the sidewalk?
Excuse me?
Is that alongside the sidewalk?
Yes. Yes, sir. There's.
Mr. Chairman?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, again, you're going to run into this issue with the minutes. You have an unidentified male?
Right.
Who's speaking?
Yes, thank you.
So I don't, you may want to hold until you have.
Okay. So when we give you a chance to come up, we'll get your name, so you're not UM on the minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
So sidewalk remains the same?
Yes.
As, as was originally approved. We've actually, this is our 24-foot-wide curb cut, that, where you would get into the front of the building in the parking area. We've moved that, I don't know exactly how far, but we've moved it probably at least 24 feet to the west.
Yeah.
To the west, yes. We also.
And then there's another driveway at the back there?
Yes. This is the existing, this is the existing curb cut.
So.
I don't know if everybody recalls, but this, this curb was installed all the way up to here. The village installed that curb. So there is a drop curb here, and, you know, we're proposing to, to maintain this existing curb cut.
So cars can pull in there?
Really, probably less for cars. It's more for people to come in.
Walk into the office?
The office is located here, and it's probably more for that.
People see a curb cut, they're going to pull in. Is there room for a car if somebody pulls?
You could, you could.
Pulls up and runs into the office? There's room?
Certainly could, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Even if it's not a designated parking spot, I'm sure people are going to pull up there?
Yep.
There's gates on that, too.
Is there a gate on that, at that point?
We, the old site plan showed this fence here.
Right.
And this fence here. I think some of the comments that were made, maybe by George and by David, talked about, you know, maybe taking those out, so it's a little cleaner and, you know, you don't see necessarily a fence, and we don't have a problem with that.
You're not, you're not trying to gate in the whole property?
No. We actually have no other gates anywhere else.
Right. Right.
They were just kind of left over from the original one.
Okay.
Kind of.
Pointless.
Rushed myself a little to get this in. But.
Yep.
So that's, that's an item that can easily be taken out. In fact, we even think, we talked about taking these walls that were going to be moved back. This is a very small wall, like 18 inches high. It's more decorative than anything, and.
Where's that wall?
It's right here.
The front of the plantings.
The front of these plantings.
So it's like a raised bed?
It is.
Okay.
Correct. And it needed to, in the, in the previous site plan application, it needed to be moved back slightly because we were going to provide a four-foot-wide grass strip in front of them, in case the village ever wanted to bring the sidewalk through further. We would be ending the sidewalk right here, as we were. as we were with the, with the previous application, so.
Well, just, just, so there's not gonna be a sidewalk to the property line? And there's, there's no sidewalk further up on Rockledge, so it would just sort of be a sidewalk to nowhere?
It would be, correct.
But what about a sidewalk between your driveway and the office? Or they would go around the other side?
Yeah, they, most people are gonna come in here and walk over to the office, most likely, park in a spot, walk over to the office. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't propose that. We left that the same as it was originally. But we do, we have no problem taking out the decorative retaining walls. In fact, it would probably be better as we just have one, you know, one elevation here.
Okay.
With some plantings, so. We do have five mechanic bays inside the, inside the building itself. We have fifteen parking spaces here, code required fourteen. I basically was just able to show fifteen, so I did.
Okay.
However.
Well, we'll get, we'll get to that, the, our planner made a suggestion that I liked, I'll go over that later.
Okay, no problem. We have a parts, parts supply room back here, which is off the back of the building, still, like I said, within the zoning setbacks. And, you know, all the bells and whistles, oil-water separator like we were gonna have. We do have shown here the dumpster, you know, the dumpsters for trash and recyclables. There were some comments made about that, we can talk about that. Drainage, you know, same form via Coltex as we had proposed on the first go-around. Probably be a few more this go-around, but we do have that here in the parking lot with an overflow, like we were gonna, well, we were gonna have an overflow to the village system over there, we'll have it over here now instead.
Can you mark it up so the public know what you're talking about?
Sure, this is the drainage, underground drainage. That'd be the overflow to the existing catch basin. We'd have a trench drain here, capture any water, so it doesn't make its way out onto Rockledge. That would be directed to there. These are the roof leaders for the entire building going into the Coltex.
And the paved area would be slightly sloped towards that center?
Yeah, it's natural, it's kind of almost naturally sloped anyway.
Okay.
We've got elevation of one oh six up here, and it's probably down to about one oh three down here.
Okay.
One oh five up here. So, what else is there? Like I said, green space, all back here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
To the north. And we'd have new, a new sewer service here, new water service here. There'll be a bathroom, two ba, probably two bathrooms, one for the office and one for the mechanics. That'll be access from inside the mechanics building.
Gas, gas connection?
Uh, yes.
Where?
Uh, actually, Bernie, is there a, we haven't got, no, is it just? It's right, right now, all the services are in this, so we'd probably just pick up the old service and bring it into the building. As we will, electrical will probably come in here. So they'll probably come into that corner. Yeah, I mean, it's kind, it really is kind of up to Con Edison, but this is where they are right now.
Okay. I have a few things I would, I would ask if you're, but I'll let you finish if you have more.
I, I think that's about it.
Can you mark where the bay door, where the bay doors going into the work area are?
Oh, sure, sorry.
If you could highlight that.
So we have a twenty-foot-wide door right here in the center, centered on the building.
Okay.
Sixteen-foot-high. We have a second door here, which is twelve-foot-wide, sixteen-foot-high.
Both could be used for vehicles.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't understand the angling of the, of the, of the bays. And like, if you had a car in front, you wouldn't be able to get into the back? So you, you have to sort of plan your work, or, I mean, is, the way I see it, is that true?
It's maybe a little bit misleading. This, so this is just a work area, these areas around here. It's not really the size of the car. So the car would be, these are the lifts.
Have you, yes, yeah, okay.
Then your car would be, you know, here.
Okay.
So you'd be able to drive in, they'd be able to pull it in, lift the car. You'd be able to drive in here, do the same, do the same for each of these.
And then there's, seems to be a fifth bay in the back?
Right, you'd be able to do the same here.
Did you want to add to this, to that?
No, I think you, as long as you.
And state your name, since you'll now be an unidentified male?
Bernie Calibro from Gallimiser.
Okay, so, so, so there's no problem with those dotted lines and not the vehicle sizes?
Correct.
So you could be working in the front and still get a vehicle in the back?
Absolutely, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. That was one question I had.
I guess, while we're on the subject of doors, we have a, you know, there's a man door in this corner. The man door to the office is right here.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
The supply room would be access from inside, right there.
So, now, in the front there, we have two parking spots?
Right here.
Right there?
Yep.
It occurs to me that those would be easier to pull in and out of if you angled them slightly more parallel with the building front rather than perpendicular to the street? Not that much, but yes.
Something like that.
Some, I think if you, I'm just saying, I mean, that's not a.
I, uh.
Like, if you're swinging around into those, would that be easier than?
Yes.
There's plenty of, huh?
Or you could back, certainly back into them, but.
Yeah, okay, just.
Today, as I was reading some of the comments, specifically, actually.
Thank you.
Specifically, the comment by Chief Outhouse, the fire chief. He mentioned trying to eliminate these, maybe? So he had, he said this was a little tight, he thought, but there's really no way we can change this. So he was wondering if one of these spaces could get lost, which technically it could, because we do show fifteen and we're required to have fourteen.
Okay.
My thought was, after I thought about it, I don't know, I just had an epiphany, I guess, today. I said, well, I don't know if the code, I, in my opinion, the code contemplates the area of your building and your work area. That, that's one of the factors that calculates how many spaces you need. So I would say that these are five spaces, and maybe we only need nine outside, in my opinion. We'd probably, you know, we'd obviously still be able to provide more just because we would want more and we have the room for it. But that would allow us to probably lose these two spaces.
Well, how many, how many spaces are we required to have?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, but that, the five inside could possibly count as, as?
I did not count them when I submitted my plan.
I'm not sure how that works, do you, do you?
I don't see why it wouldn't.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're, you know, if a car's there overnight and being worked on, it could certainly.
Where I just suggested angling those spots, what if you just had two spots par, parallel parking?
You got the length?
Do you have the length there to put two spots?
You mean like this?
Yep.
Well, I mean, I, I think the whole, I, I guess, when I was thinking about this issue of these parking spaces, it was because the fire chief wanted to try to.
Wanted to be able to swing around there, but he couldn't get through there anyway, can he?
Either that or just get a, you know.
Okay, all right, so possibly, so we could look at possibly eliminating those two spots.
Right.
Okay, we could look at that. Let's see. Where is your lighting along the par, for the, for the parking lot, outside lighting?
So, yeah, we would have a light above the main door, we'd probably have a light above this door, and we'd probably have a light above the, the door.
Any lighting?
And here as well.
Any lighting in the parking area?
We didn't propose any. Kind of thought that, you know, it really didn't need it. Kind of.
Streetlights.
Streetlights out.
Streetlights, though.
Albany Post Road and whatnot. I think there are some on Rockledge as well, so. Sure, if we had to add them, we.
Was there, Dave, was it in your comments, something about lighting? Did I see that?
Yes, we had made a suggestion that if there's going to be street lighting along Albany Post Road.
Dave, could you give your full name and who you are for the, for the, for bait of minutes?
So I'm not an unidentified male, thank you, Dave Smith, planning consultant of the village of Buchanan. So the, one of the comments that we had raised was, given that you have other developments along Albany Post Road, new developments that are, that have new street, or have street fixtures or lighting along Albany Post Road, that if it makes sense here, that if lighting's needed, that you include something that's more decorative as part of the, the street frontage. Consistent with what the village has been seeing with both Village Square and the AMS project.
And, and along the front of their properties?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, so that, that's, aesthetic is, is one of it, one thing, but also if it's in the winter when it's dark and you have that parking lot, is there sufficient lighting for the people that are getting their cars? Or for, possibly for security purposes in the evening?
Well, I mean, as mentioned, we, we would have the, the lighting on the building itself. They would be downward facing, obviously, because that's typically what everybody wants.
Okay.
So we're not, you know, bleeding light onto other properties. I'll let Marco, you know, show you the, the lights that we have for the building.
Okay.
And we've got a, you know, we've got a spec for that. If it, if the board, you know, thinks it's necessary, I mean, I'll, I'll, we'll take a look and see what the lighting situation is now, currently. And if everybody thinks it's necessary, then it wouldn't be a difficult thing for us to have.
Yeah, do we know where the streetlights are?
Down down on that side, there's only one, there's only, I'm sorry. Marcus Serrano, village administrator for the record. There's one Cobra Head on the opposite side, there's no auto lights in that area. So when, when Village Square gets put in, that's why I was telling you, when Village Square puts in, they'll have decorative lighting, but I think there's one Cobra Head on the opposite side of the road.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe there is a.
Yeah, but not the.
Streetlight, right.
Not on Albany Post Road, though.
I'm just saying, right here, there.
It's on the other side of the road.
Yes.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Oh, that one there, okay. So there is a, there is a utility pole right here that obviously is staying. It's Con Ed's pole, and I believe that has a, that has a, a streetlight on it.
Yeah, I was addressing more the Albany Post Road.
Uh, it's right, right about here.
There is, oh, there is a streetlight there?
On Rockledge.
Okay.
On Rockledge.
All right.
And Cobra Head.
All right, so we can let people comment on that, and we could look at that a little further. And the, there was a suggestion from the village planner, being that you had more spots than you needed, of a, a way to enlarge the landscaped area along 9, 9A, rather. And feel like going up there and, and using his highlighter to show that?
I, I think Jim can do just a fine job with.
Should he do that?
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
My day's working, etch a sketch, that are long since gone, so.
Have you already discussed this, or?
No, we haven't, but I think Jim understands the concept. Yeah, you have that space right there. If you eliminated that, you're, you're able to push the landscaping further to the west. So you could pick up six, seven, maybe eight feet.
Whatever the, whatever the width of a spot is there.
Right, and I think that, again, that's one of the considerations for your board of how to treat the Albany Post Road frontage. And whether you're going to have, where the building is located, or whether you have parking located there.
Right, right. I think if we're going to go with parking on that side of the building, I think I would be very much in favor of widening that landscape area in the front on the 9A side by, by eliminating that spot and just moving the other one, two, three, four, five spots forward.
I think, I think if we can consider these five spaces inside the building, you know, I think, I think that's doable.
Easy spots, you could eliminate that and probably the other two as well.
Certainly move that one and move this, you know, ways over.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, right now, this is probably nine feet wide.
Nine?
Yeah.
No.
Eight, nine feet, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs to be any more than nine feet.
I would want to have that clarified, because just looking at the, the parking spaces that you're showing there are how wide?
Sixteen by nine.
These are nine.
That's nine feet?
It's probably eight feet.
Hmm, okay.
I think that's plenty for landscaping and park.
Well, that's for the planning board to determine.
Well, the, the other issue is that there's utilities under there, so that's really limiting your, what you can plant. You can only plant shrubs on top of it, of a, you got sewer and you got.
This is the.
Drainage.
This is the utility easement.
Yep.
So, you know, we could.
Okay, okay, so.
Certainly move that, you know, right up to the utility line.
Okay, okay, so it might be some issues. I mean, I was, when I say landscaping, I'm not talking about redwoods, you know?
Sure, yeah. We don't want to plant redwoods. So, you know, you got a drain pipe in here, you got a sewer pipe going that way. You know, that's, that's where they are. So they're, they're more towards the Albany Post Road property line than they are towards the easement line. But we could certainly, you know, we gain another probably three feet by moving it right up to the, about to the, to the easement line.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's something we could, we could look at.
Can I make a comment real quick, Marcus, for record? And if you put the grass area over the easement, it'll be easier also to access any, instead of digging up the blacktop in the future, too, in case you don't need it access. So it might be a good idea to put it in the grass area, just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that'll, that'll, that'll do it, yeah. We went right up to the.
That's a good point.
To the, to the easement.
And, and, you know, a little more than eight feet also, it needs to stagger plantings and create a more interesting buffer. Not like you're looking to put tall things or big things, you know, giant trees or anything. Okay, so. Did somebody else on your team there want to?
Hand it over to Marco, and he can kind of go through the rendering of the building and.
Okay.
Materials and things like that.
Okay, so before that, we have a question?
On the other point.
On the other point? So we gotta stop sharing?
Oh, wait, don't, don't get rid of it yet.
Before, we're gonna have a board member has a question before we switch?
Sure.
Eileen Absinder, where is the hazardous material and the sign for the fire department located?
That would be in the room itself.
In which room?
Or outside the room.
Outside what room?
The room, room in the back.
The parts room?
The parts room, because that's where we would have our waste oil and acetylene. So there'll be, there'll be a sign on the door out, you know, into that room for the fire department.
Okay.
And as they requested, like with Pacific Auto, same thing. You know, they also just wanted us to call out on the site plan where it was.
Okay.
So they know where it is, ahead of time.
Okay. Hello, everyone, Marco Manager, Architect. So, you obviously all know the circumstances that we were under. So we've taken very careful consideration on the new design, both for the cost of the building as well as how fast this can be executed. So our approach is to propose a prefabricated metal building, which is something that could be done rather quickly than your, you know, traditional stick-built or masonry building. It's approximately sixty by sixty-two wide, width and length. And obviously, we wanted to take some consideration into the residential area, so we have some materials. We're proposing stone on the bottom here. This is a good draw here. So all along the bottom, four feet of the building would be stone, all the way wrapping around. And then above that, all of this material would be a metal cladding. We have our gooseneck sconces here, 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 and should be, yeah, there's one here, it's just not showing properly. This is to light up the entrances, light up the garage doors. We have our Gallimiser sign up above. And then we've also included some large windows, both to break up the facade. And then we've also included some large windows, both to break up the facade and also to bring some natural lighting within the building. So I can bring it to the elevations here. This was another option, but we don't want to talk about that. That one had stucco, so we don't want to, we don't want to do stucco. So this is the front elevation. You can see the three sconces here, the one by the entrance for the office. Stone on the bottom again, all the way wrapping around. This is your entrance into the garage. This is the back of the building, really not much going on here, no windows. This is one window, which is into the bathroom. And then the, the two opposite, was this north and south elevations? You see lots of windows here. This is facing
Up top?
This is north, yep, facing the residence, and then this is facing Rockledge. So lots of windows, lots of natural light within the building. Also helps to break up the industrial look of the building. And that's pretty much it. Bernie, you want to add anything for? Yeah, I mean, just, you're gonna have, you know, a capping on top of the stone. We do have some images. I don't know if you want to pass these around, this is the gooseneck sconce.
You could, let's just get ones for the record.
And then, this is actually this back for the stone. Yeah, so this is, this is the color of the stone that we like. It's called Fitzwilliam by Delgado Stone, but it would be in a different pattern. It would be more of a ledger stone. This is more of a, a square rectangle pattern, but we, this is essentially the color that we're looking at too.
Can I just, just, just to get some clarification for the public and for the other, for the board members here? We had a, a meeting, and we talked about the, the idea of doing a metal building, but we do have the design guidelines for this area. And in that meeting, we just, we said that there's a lot of, that I, something I did not know is that metal buildings can be, have siding or different, different materials applied. So I understand the stone, but above that, you said it's, is it just a metal buil- building? Or is there some applied siding? Because generally, if in the area, we're looking at, looking at things that kind of conform to the design guidelines, and there's, you know, it's more lighter earth colors, which, that may be, it's a little hard to tell from that illustration. But can you clarify what is above the stone? Is that just the metal building?
So it, it's the metal building, but it has a board and batten aesthetic.
Is there someplace we could see what this looks like?
Their website?
Because, you know, renderings are, are hard to interpret.
Yeah, I mean, I think the company that fabricates them, their website has a lot of different illustrations of, of built structures.
Any local building that we could see?
I'm not aware.
Maybe that, maybe the company that you're dealing with could recommend a place where we could see this? Because I, I think this is very hard to interpret for, for most people. If you're familiar with it, and have seen it a hundred times, maybe, you know, that's another thing, but I don't think we have.
I'm not sure where we could find an actual building, but their website does have photos of built structures on, on their
I, I was, I was driving down nine W up in, I don't know, probably like Monroe, that area last night. And I was going a little too fast to get, to stop and get a picture, but a building caught my eye. Because, in fact, that whole stretch through down nine W, going south, north and south, there's metal buildings everywhere. They're, they're, they're everywhere, and I was looking at every single one of them. And I came across one where that looked, I mean, it caught my eye because it looked so nice. So I think I could drive by there and get some pictures.
What you're planning on doing here?
Yeah.
Is that an area you drive through regularly?
No, but I'll go there.
Could you get some photos and forward them to us?
Sure.
All right, right, Bernie, we talked at that, when we met, we talked about different possibilities. And you mentioned something about the building that's just south of the hardware store. Is that, you know, there's the residential, commercial residential building just south of the hardware store on nine A?
We had talked about that.
And was that, is that what this is? If we go look at that, that's not the same?
I don't know exactly.
Okay.
You were talking about like finishing more?
Well, I, I don't know, we were talking about that you could apply all sorts of different siding and different things over the metal. And, you know, I don't, you know, we'll let everybody weigh in, but I, I think the, the design guidelines for that area do not also include metal buildings. So, so we were looking if you're gonna do a, a metal building to, to dress it up, so.
Sure.
So I think we're gonna need to see a little more on this, and maybe get those photos, samples or something that the board can actually look at, because it's very hard to interpret what that's gonna look like, just looking at that. Generally, well, you know, if you look at the design guidelines for the overlay zone, we're steering towards some of the, you know, more lighter and earth, earth tones and classic siding, stone combinations with siding, you know, I think the, uh, do you have, have you seen those design guidelines?
Yes.
You have them, okay, so.
I have a question. These are the buildings like they're making the barn dominiums out of, right?
Yeah.
And you can't tell the difference. It looks like, you would be shocked at what they look like.
Well, I, I might be shocked, I'd be happy to be shocked. Tell me where to go so I can look at it and be shocked.
What did you call them? They're barn dominiums.
Barn dominiums?
People are building, they're like big giant buildings downstairs, big garages and living space up top.
Barn dominiums. Ah, it's a new one on me. It's not a four-letter word, though. Okay, do you know where there's a barn dominium I could, that we could go look at? I mean, I don't know, how, how do you know about barn dominiums?
I know a lot.
Okay, I, I, I would need a li- little help from the applicant, or any board members that are familiar with something, to steer us to things that we could actually go look at, or bring us samples. You know, because I think I'm comfortable saying for myself, and probably for other people on the board, that it's a little hard to interpret.
It is, it is hard to interpret. On a website, do they have color variations? Do they, you know, they're showing you different types of buildings, but do they give you different colors? Do they give you all of this?
Okay, can you Okay, so could we, can you forward that website to us?
They, they sent me some photos of our color combination that we were looking for. Obviously, this isn't what we're proposing, but you might be able to see it a little bit better if I hand you this photo, if you want to take a look at it, so you can see the color that we chose.
Yeah, there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, I'm not throwing it out, you know, I just, I just want to be able to see, get a better look. Well, okay, I mean, that still look, it still looks like a metal building, and I think we're trying to avoid
That was the colors.
We're trying to avoid a metal building that looks like a metal building, and have a metal building that's, you know, dressed up, sort of like a lion in sheep's clothing, you know? You know, cl- cladding, siding, so, um, I'm gonna let other people start making, you know, weigh in, but, but I think that, I'd, I'd like to try and steer this to something that does not look like a metal prefab building.
Yeah, well, the picture is just for color reference, so maybe you could see it.
Okay, okay.
So if we were gonna wrap the building in, let's say, a board and batten, or a lap siding, or something, a ship lap, would it be enough if we only did the area between the stone and the trim? Or would it have to be the entire building?
Well, there's not, you mean, just leave that, that, the triangle area there?
Just leave the gable, and then this kind of area, you know, whatever the metal building is.
That might be okay, but, you know, because that would bring it, yeah, I mean, that, that might work.
Okay, I mean, uh, this was the other option, which is basically just stucco. It's stone, and then stucco, and then the middle building, just to show you what it looks like with something else.
Is that stucco, a, a hand-applied stucco, or is that like a sheet of material that, is stucco material that you can?
Yeah, there's a few options. Yeah, and we'd have to discuss with the manufacturer on how this would actually be applied to their building.
So I think, I think I will let, I'd like to let other board members, go through the, other board members, and, and get their comments and questions, if, if you don't mind. And, and does anybody want to start with any questions or comments? Follow-up on what we just discussed? Yes, Jeff?
On the floor plan, Jeff, planning board member. Where is the boiler and the hot water heater in the building? Because I don't see it on the plans.
Well, would, there wouldn't be a boiler.
Well, you have to have heat, would you have a heat?
A furnace.
A furnace?
And they're normally ceiling-mounted or mounted to the rear bay. And then the office is going to have a heat pump and air conditioning, so it won't have any traditional furnace. And the hot water heater would be located in the office.
So you're gonna have overhead heaters for the bays?
Yeah, overhead heaters for the bays.
And then how would you heat the bathroom and the offices?
Bathroom and the office would be the heat pump. It works off the HVAC system, you know, air conditioning and heat pump.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Jira.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, alright.
Couple of things, Kieran Oathouse, planning board member. Some of them are just clarification for the public, and some are some questions that I think Dave can build answer. One of the things I believe the fire department recommended was the installation of a sprinkler system. It's not required. I believe there's one of four different categories you have to hit to have it, they don't meet any of them. So they are conforming with the code on that. It would be nice if they had a sprinkler system, but they're expensive, and I, I think that's understood. The other question is related to the email you sent about historical preservation. We really don't have anything in the way in the village code on historical preservation, from what I'm aware of. You did mention the New York State Cultural Resource Information System, which I think is run by the Office of Parks and
Recreation and Historic Preservation, right.
And you said that's on there. What, what does, I, I'm somewhat familiar with the website, but what does that actually mean in terms of?
So at, at one point, and, and with our prior review memo, we actually included the, the forms that were on the, the Chris website. So essentially, what happened is that Westchester County conducted a survey in a number of different communities in Westchester County. And they documented this particular property. It's, it, it didn't rise to a, a level where it would be part of a, either a state or, or national historic resource. But it was noted that it's a unique architectural feature, because, primarily because of the oil can that is kind of the, kind of the landmark feature for that building. So it's not, it's not a registered historic site, but it does have unique character. And I think that, that's part of what the, the comment was, not necessarily from a historic preservation standpoint, but simply from, as a part of the Buchanan community. That's a unique feature within the community as you drive up and down Albany Post Road. Certainly as a planner, when I'm driving through, when I was first driving through Buchanan, that stood out. And so that's why I made the comment about, you know, the first application, you were keeping that, that feature. And I thought that was a, a very commendable part of their site plan application. So I simply wanted to raise the, the issue with the applicant and with your board as to whether that feature could be retained as part of a, the, the site plan, the current site plan approval. So I'm interested in hearing from the applicant and his representatives as to whether it can be saved, or it can't be saved, or whether that feature could be somehow incorporated into the, the current design. And I know that they've, they've indicated they've included the gallon measure sign, but is there something else that could be used to kind of reflect that, that character within the, the corridor?
I appreciate it, because I know sometimes a historic, a building being historical may just be sentimental to some people, but that building does have some significance. And I know that's why a lot of residents are kind of concerned about this project. So I'm glad that that was stated.
Okay.
That is all I have for now.
Tracy?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. So how big?
I just thought of something. Rocco. When it came to Karen, Karen asking about the oil can. David, is there any way that corner, where you're going to put that sign? If you don't incorporate it into the building, is there any way to either condense it a little bit or have it so that it's in that corner that
The north, the northeast corner?
You wanted more grass.
Right.
You, you mean that, that sort of zone between the parking?
Yeah.
How big is that, you know the size of that thing?
Of the tea, of the, uh, oil can?
Tea can, oil can, what, what is that thing?
I think it's about twelve, fifteen feet or
Diaphragm?
Fifteen feet in diameter, probably.
But we'd have to We'd have to go and look at the condition of it to see if it's gonna be
Could be lifted.
It's stucco, so moving that is
The original plan was to keep it, but now
Yeah, but if, you're, you're proposing moving it to the corner.
Well, if you're going to try to keep it for prosperity.
I, I think that makes, if, if we're gonna do anything with it, that would make the most sense to move it and have it be sort of a landmark on the property at the corner. I don't see how incorporating it into the new building
I don't see how that can happen, but
Or make sense, but I think it's gonna be a very delicate situation because it's quite old. It's stucco, so, you know, it would probably
Hard to move.
Probably require a lot of reinforcing, a crane, a lot of cost.
Tricky, tricky.
A pad for it to sit on, you know?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping we could move it to the village hall lawn and make it the new office for the mayor.
If they wanted him alone, you can have it.
If you want to move it.
Would it be possible to do, if you're going to put a sign in that corner, or someplace over there, could we do a replica of the oil can so that it kind of mimics it, but it's more sturdy? It doesn't cost a lot of money?
You want to build a half-scale model of it?
Well, something that, you know.
That's not an unreasonable request to at least ask the applicant to think about if you're gonna have signage and you're gonna remove the, the existing portion, that, that oil can. That's not an unreasonable request to at least ask the applicant to look at that as, as an alternative.
Rocco, look at that, please.
If there's Bernie.
No, Rocco.
Marco.
Oh, Marco, okay.
I'm like, who are you talking to?
And just to clarify, I know some people, some couple residents said something about the master plan, so the way I read it was, when the survey was sent out, the eight pri, it was a list of priorities that the village residents identified back in 2005, or whatever it was, I was quite young. And it said on it, I still am, and it said on it that historical, like, preservation was like the eighth priority. So not necessarily the highest, but it actually mentioned the gallon measure specifically in 2005. And then on the list of goals, it said to start preservation. Unfortunately, the village board, I don't think any board has enacted any kind of historical preservation laws or anything. But just keep that in the back of your mind. I think that's why there's some questions, is it does mean a lot to the residents here. And I understand it may not be the most feasible thing, but
Yeah, we tried to keep it in the original plan, but that plan fell apart.
Where does that sit in that, in that plan there? Where would you estimate the location to be? Right, right there?
Yeah, it's right in
Oh, that's handy.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
We thought about it every other way to try to remove the parking back.
Okay, let's, let me, let me Well, I, I, I think aesthetically, the, the intersection corner, but that might block view of sight for turning traffic. So probably that, that north corner where there's a dead space between the parking.
Can we leave that as like a to-be-determined kind of?
Well, let's, let's do one, let's, you know, maybe you guys could, in, in, in good faith, you know, look at it and, and see is there any, you know, is it sound enough to lift, or is it gonna completely fall apart? If you could just kind of look at it a little further. If you could just kind of look at it a little further and, and give us your honest assessment on that. And then I'm just going to ask, because we don't usually get too many people here. Are the people in the audience, if you could raise your hand if this is what brought you here tonight? Oh, wow. Everybody? Okay. So, and, and, you know, clearly you got some concern from the board and, and it's an issue that the public is concerned about. So let's, let's examine it, see if it can withstand moving in any way. If it could, I don't know if there's any other alternate site, but maybe that spot there. And then if you do move it, what happens? I'd like to see a, an espresso station. But, okay. So, you know, if, that would be between now and the next meeting if we could examine that and tell, and get a report to us. Also get us some samples or, or photos of, of these materials. Send us that website and tell us if you, if anybody knows, comes across something where we could actually see an example of this, that, you know, the board members could do a little site visit to. That would be great. Okay. And, and on the board, Karen, did you have another question?
No.
You, you covered it, okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
I'm still thinking.
Okay. Now, I, I think the goal is to get us to, you know, to have a public hearing. And before I, you know, go further though, just to outline if, based on what we've discussed so far, are there any amendments to the site plan that we want to see? We talked about possibly, possible changes to the parking spaces. Do we want to try and go ahead and allow that five spaces inside to be five of your 14 spots? In which case, we could, we could eliminate the two spots in the front that there was a concern for the fire department and having access all around the building. Possibly, and then coming in, I think I would like to see the, that elimination of one more spot in the northeast corner there, like we talked about, and bringing the, and bringing those spots forward. And I would like to see it with a wider buffer there, just for aesthetic purposes, since we're going to allow, you know, the parking in the front, which is what we're, what our overlay zone is seeking to avoid. But I think, I think it would probably, it's, it, there's some balance because in the back, all that parking is more of a disturbance to me, to the residences immediately behind and nearby. So I, I think I would like to see that. Does anybody else on the board have, share that opinion or, yeah? Okay, got two heads nodding. Let the record reflect that two planning board members shook their heads in agreement to my right and on my left.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Jeff Fiallo, planning board. Do you know what the material decibel for sound is? You're, you're moving the shop closer to the residence. Is the steel building going to be able to lessen the sound? So can you ask the manufacturer what the decibel...
Sure, we can ask them.
Sounding is for that material? Because, because I don't really like it that the shop moved closer to the house.
Oh, you don't, okay. You prefer to see the parking on the other side?
I prefer it to be maybe moved to the center and parking behind or something, I don't know, but...
Unfortunately, there's not enough room in the center.
Yeah, I was going to say, we took, we looked at everything. And the sheer geometry of the, of the lot doesn't allow for us to move it up. You know, that's really the size that they need to get five bays in there. So there's, it's just, it doesn't work any other way.
So you would have to provide to me that you, that building would actually decrease any sound coming out of it? Because I know when the summertime is, the doors may be up or, or hopefully you have new AC in there. It'd be down that the neighbors don't hear the guns going off.
Well, let me make this point. Before, when the building was where it was, we were going to have bays that were facing the residence.
Yeah, I understand that.
So if those doors were going to be open, they were going to hear everything that was going on inside there. Now, there's nothing in the back that, you know, would be open.
But the manufacturer maybe ever give you the information I'm looking for?
Yeah, sure, we'll do that.
Let's see if we can get that.
Whatever they give us for the building, it's going to be increased because we're going to also fur out the walls and insulate.
Wouldn't that be spray foam insulation?
I think, yeah, we talked about it with the building department about what levels of insulation it's going to require. It's actually more than the manufacturer provides, so.
And then can't you put that sound deadening stuff in the walls?
I think where'd you get that much spray foam? It's, it's like...
We're going to meet the energy code requirements.
Or Peter, what do you want to say?
I was saying, the foam insulation is a, is a sound absorption item in its own right. And it's a steel building, there's no walls, so to say. Usually you're foaming right in between all the, the building members to insulate the building. Usually, because it's foam, if that's what you're intending on doing.
Spray foam should be attached to the metal.
Yeah, it's spray...
There will be no air gaps.
You know, and so that, that absorbs a lot of sound.
Yeah, and I think Jim's point is a good one. The open doors is where you're going to, where more sound is going to travel than any insulated wall. So the doors being on the other side is a big factor, I think.
Peter Cook, Village Inspector, I had a quick question about the heat. Would you be introducing a waste oil heater at the ceiling to try to minimize storage and things? I'm just asking. Because I've done a few of those.
Natural gas.
Yeah, natural gas, you're going to, okay, just asking.
On the metal frame, what's the timeframe for construction?
Timeframe for, well, I have to, you know, one of the issues that we're running into is I have to order all the materials. It's going to take them three months from deposit on contract to delivery of materials. From, you know, say if I order it tomorrow. So it's going to be three-month wait until I get the materials. And then usually the building goes up fairly rapidly, a couple of weeks.
Within two weeks, I would say, the building will be up. Not finished, obviously, with the steel members.
Right, once, once the foundation is poured. So once the building's engineered, they'll give us their load calcs. We'll calc, based on the point loads, we'll calc the foundation requirements. Foundation can then get installed while the building's being fabricated. And then once it's shipped, it goes up within a few days.
And is that also, I presume, a metal roof?
Yeah, metal roof.
Everything, yeah. It'll have shingles, right? We're going to do shingles?
No, I think a full, like standing seam or like a metal roof.
Question, what's the height of, of the roof on this, on 34 feet?
No, I think it's less than that.
34 feet to the ridge?
Yeah.
And previously, there was a second, the last plan had a second floor. What was the height on that?
Roughly the same.
How is that? How is it, how is a one-story building the same height as a two-story building?
It's the height. This, this building has a...
A steeper, a steeper grade, a steeper pitch?
So the ridge is 34.3. So the eve is 23.
Can you depend on market so that...
So to here, it's 34, 34.3. And then to the eve, it's 23. And then to the middle, what about the middle? To the middle is 29. So, and the height requirement is 35.
Right. Well, actually, I think in the overlay zone, the height, it was, the height allowance is higher, yeah. So the previous one was similar in height, but the eaves were higher, so there was less pitch to it? Is that what you're saying?
And the building was narrower, so with the gables.
Gotcha, travels further. Gotcha. I'm going to, all right, so we're going to, we're going to amend the site plan to increase that front buffer and adjust the parking spots. Anything else from what we discussed so far that we feel we'd like to see amended on the plan? Okay. We're going to look at the lighting.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Assess that if we need any lighting, other lighting along the front of the parking lot or something. I'm not sure if we do, but take a look at what's there and make sure that there's ample lighting if, if it's after dark and people are out there, they don't need a flashlight. So what does the, I'm going to ask, I'm kind of asking everybody now. Are we ready to set up a public hearing? Or do we need to get the rest of this info and meet again before we do that? Any, anyone want to weigh in there? I'd like to...
I think the applicant has heard some significant comments from, from the board and from staff. And certainly, if they make a commitment to trying to address those issues, I think it would be appropriate for the planning board to schedule a public hearing. And that way, the information becomes available soon as possible. It will also allow all the people who are interested in this project to participate as part of the public hearing process.
Okay. And then if we, so if, if anything has to get amended or other information we need, the public hearing go to a second month.
Correct.
We don't have to, you know, so, so, so either way, we can, we can get the info we need. So between now and the next month, we're looking for you to check the sound rating of the building, try to steer us towards a better visual of what the materials are and, and make sure that we're following those guidelines in the, in the overlay, design guidelines. We're going to do a check of the, of that teapot, oil can. What's it for all, was it meant to be an oil can or is it a...
Measurement. Oil can.
Yeah, it's an oil can, wow. All these years I've been calling it a tea kettle. All right. So, you know, just to really, you know, in good faith, let's, let's look at that and see, can it withstand moving? Is there a way to do it? Because I think that's going to be a contentious issue. Is there anything else between, you know, I think that covers it? Okay. So I'm going to, the public, I'm very happy you all came. I, I don't want to spend another hour, because if we open a public hearing, your comments will be on the record and I'd like you all to come back. But other than the fact that you all are, would be upset to see the oil can, are there any other comments from the public? Because I, I understand that that's a big issue. But are there any other comments related to this that...
Before I step, can I ask?
One second, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, that's fine. Just before, you know, we open up for public conversation, is there any way that, since it looks like the building is just, at this point, all the questions are mostly aesthetical, is there any way that I can start moving forward with this project so I can get the building ordered?
Risky. I can't say that because, you know, we haven't finished the process and if we, you know... You mean to order the building? Is that what you mean?
Yes, we, because ordering the building starts the engineering process, so they can start getting the foundation ready.
I understand, but until, until we give you, until the site plan's approved, you'd be doing that at your own risk. I don't think you want to do that.
Just because, you know, there's...
I know, I understand.
Right now.
I understand, but it would be, you know, if, if you go ahead and order something and then we amend the site plan or, or, you know, it turns out we, you know, that the predominant view is such that something has to change, kind of screwed.
We're talking aesthetics at that point, right? It's all aesthetic stuff.
Most likely, but I can't tell you for sure. I can't, until the site plan's approved, I would be, it would be negligent on my part to say, sure, go ahead. No problem, get it going. I don't think it would be a good idea. If you do so, it's at your own risk because we haven't finished the process and something could change.
Especially if we hold this public hearing and we get significant public input that goes against just the aesthetical stuff, we have to take that into account. We have an obligation to listen to the public on that. So it's, I see what you're saying, but it's...
Maybe conform the zoning. There's, zoning will allow the building to go up. It's, that's, you know, the building can be ordered. It's just, you kind of need the head nod from the planning, you know, the people up here to...
I, I can't give you a head nod until we complete the process and get input and have everybody vote. If, you know, like, even if I said 90%, you'd taken a chance. And I don't think you want to do that. Sorry.
Thank you.
You guys are terrible. You're terrible. You're stuck.
All right, please, let's chill on that. Let's chill on that, okay? Direct your comments up here, don't, please, let's not have...
Listen to the whole...
Yeah, no, all right. You may disagree, but let's not get into personal discussions back there, please. So, yes, sir, please state your name.
My name's Henry Gallagher. First, I never heard of anybody demoing the gallon measure, number one. Nobody, nobody said it was going to be demoed until tonight. Okay, now...
You, you mean the, that tea, the, the oil can? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I have some questions. Did anybody do any soil testing, any air testing or anything, what was done on the demolition already? And if so, I'd like to see those results. Was anything done for any testing of that property?
I am not aware of any, unless the building inspector, was there any, was there any testing involved? Because I think it was taken down without us being informed, so I'm...
Yeah, first of all, the roof never was attempted to come off. I was there. They demoed it right from the middle of the building. So that's number one. It was a false statement that they were trying to take the roof off. That was false. I was right there, I got pictures of it. So I'm asking the building inspector, did you do any testing?
Did I do any testing, Mr. Gallagher? No, I did not.
Why wouldn't you take a test on a building that's 1946? You know, there could be the word A. I don't want to see the word, but there could be A involved with that building. There could be oil in the soil that you took out of there. Where did that soil go to? Where did the soil go to?
This is more than a comment.
Okay.
Not questions.
It's legal. We got, we got my sister's health, my sister's health is involved there.
Excuse me, Mr. Gallagher, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. You're providing a courtesy to the public to provide comments, right? So that you can understand some of their preliminary comments.
Correct, correct.
So this is, this is a courtesy, right? My suggestion is if there's going to be a combative tenor here, that anybody who's interested in this project, please submit all your comments in writing. Because your comment, you're asking specific comments.
I'm all right here.
That's great. If you could submit those comments in writing, that gives everybody, including the representatives from the village and the applicant, an opportunity to understand what your concerns are and your comments are and to have a, an opportunity to provide a response. I understand that you...
I would have loved to have an off, off speak on this. Because I'm concerned about my sister's health, okay? And they were told to put a barrier up and it was never done.
Okay.
Okay? Number one. My sister's on oxygen. And I don't want to see her dying in this, over this project. And it's going to happen. You understand what I'm saying? It's a health problem.
Yes.
And one of the, and the owner came onto my sister's property and I showed it to him. My sister washed the table off nine times during the day and I showed it to him. I put my hand like this and my hand came out black. So this was my sister's breathing.
Understood.
I don't like that.
Hmm.
Okay, we got a health issue. And you're going up to 40-foot height in this building. My sister's windows are only 10 feet off the ground. What is she going to look at, the side of a building?
It's not 40.
Well, there'll be, there'll be landscaping, you know...
You're moving the building back towards her house, is what you're doing.
Well, there was going to be landscaping when it was a parking lot.
It's going to be all the windows.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just, as a comment.
We will look at the, to make sure that there's sufficient buffering there. Having buffering there to the, to the residents is part of the plan.
Thank you very much for your help.
So we will look at that, all right. Thank you for your comments.
But I wish everybody would find, when you have a stop order, stop order means you do not work on the property. A pipe was just put in that property the other day. I don't know if the building inspector seen it, but he drove by. He must have seen the pipe going in. It was a stop order, why is that pipe being put in? Nobody's going to answer it?
I don't know.
Mr. Gallagher, we need an opportunity to review your comments and then there'll be a response.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So I... Um, so, uh, again, uh, there's anger, there's opinions, but we're gonna go through this in the public hearing. I think we're gonna set this public hearing up for next month. Um, and you're all welcome to come back and share your comments. I'm gonna, I don't wanna have arguing between people in the audience. I want all comments to be directed up here. And we will look at the site plan and, 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 you know, what, what we had originally, uh, doesn't exist anymore. That building was taken down. The building inspector has been dealing with the applicant as far as, uh, any penalties that were, as a result of this. That's being resolved administratively. As a planning board now, our responsibility is to look at the new site plan. It's as though, it's day one, you know, it's, it's coming to us, um, you know, it's a whole new deal. The, the, any mistakes made in, in the demoing without a permit, that's an administrative issue that we cannot address here in the planning board. So I, I do wanna hear your concerns, but, uh, but, you know, um, our jurisdiction is to look at the site plan and others. There may be other jurisdictions with enforcement that, that are outside of our, uh, you know. But we're gonna do our best to look at the site plan and balance it. It's gotta, it's, you know, there's, there's gotta be a balance because, uh, you know, certain, shifting the building might negatively impact somebody else. Uh, but, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to all the different site plans. And we'll try to look at this and weigh it and, and hopefully come up with something good. So thank you for coming. I'm gonna ask you all, share your, if you have specific questions, like Mr. Gallagher just had, you're welcome to submit them ahead of time so we can look into them. Uh, otherwise, you're welcome to come and share your opinions at the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could just, uh, if anybody has any public comments, I, my suggestion would be is to direct them to, uh, Marcus Serrano, who's the village administrator. I believe your email address is on the village website.
Oh, yes.
And, and he will distribute them to, to you, to staff.
Yes, okay, so for the people here and for the people at home, if you have any comments or questions, you can submit them to the village administrator's, uh, email on the website. You'll find the email for Marcus Serrano, our village administrator.
I, I was gonna say that. I think that's a fantastic idea. It allows me, as, you know, the one who's submitting all the information to your board and, and to, and for the public's knowledge.
Yes.
It allows me to respond at, for the next meeting.
Yeah.
So it's not a waste of everybody's time just coming.
Of course, of course.
So, you know, if, if, if anybody has a comment and they can email.
Some of the questions might require doing a little homework on, on somebody's part, so having them beforehand is a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you to the audience.
I have something else to add. I don't wanna stop thinking. When you have the filters, are they HEPA filters? So that when the fumes come up from the garage, they've gotta go someplace, I presume.
They go out the front, right?
Do they go out the front? Do they go out the side? Do they go up? Do they go back? Where do they go? Any of the fumes that are coming out?
If you have, if you're working on a car and your car is ironed, don't you have to have like a hose going out to the, to the exhaust?
Typically, so the people inside the building don't, you know, die from CO poisoning.
Inside the building, but I wanna know where it goes outside.
You would have a hose that, uh, you know, typically a lot of these places have hoses that go through the garage doors. And, you know, it goes out, you know.
So.
So in this case, it would be better to go out the front because it's away from the residential.
Okay, I just wanna know where the fumes are gonna go, you know.
Bernie may have more to add than that. I, I mean, I'm not the mechanical engineer, you know, for the project, but that, that would typically be what it is.
And I think also any venting, you know, but just general venting, in the garage usually goes through the roof.
Goes through the roof, okay. All right. Okay, just wanna make sure.
You know, as any, any furnace would in a house, you know, it would go up through the, through the flue and through the, through the roof.
Okay, so, um, our next meeting is on, um, November twenty-fourth. And I'm gonna, uh, ask for a motion to.
It's a Monday, right?
It's a Monday, isn't it?
It is a Monday.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, yes, yes, the regular meeting would have landed on Thanksgiving, so we have changed the, the meeting next month to the Monday, the twenty-fourth. The Monday before Thanksgiving, right? Um, at seven PM.
Would be.
It'll be on the village calendar.
If I just ask, is the deadline same?
Sorry, Jim.
It's November tenth.
Have to digest it.
I agree.
I'm sorry, what was that, Jim?
I was just gonna say, is the deadline pushed further back because of the meeting moving or is it the same deadline as it normally would be? November tenth, so.
The submission deadline is two weeks before, November tenth.
Okay.
That way you have your comments, it could sort of have comments, I get back to you before the meeting, so it'll speed up the process.
All right, so, uh, a board member, please make a motion to, uh, set up a public hearing from Monday, November twenty-fourth at seven PM on, um, the gallon measure application, calendar PB four dash twenty-twenty-five.
And make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bernie, did you want these papers that you passed?
The airflow coming into the building.
Chairman, do you wanna keep this on, on the record? All the furnaces.
Oh, no, we didn't. I felt so, I felt so done, I thought that was it.
Still on the record.
All right, for the record, a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planning board meeting is over.